Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Board of Selectmen's regularly scheduled meeting for August fifth, two thousand and twenty five. I call this meeting to order at five P M. Next on our agenda, public forum. On a public forum, if you could, just state your name and your address for the record. Who wants to start first?
I'll go first.
Sure.
So my name is Scott, my address is two thirty Lebanon Avenue, Lebanon, Connecticut, so we're down as Route sixteen. Um, my last attendance to this meeting was on May sixth. I started a request to have the bi-directional passing zone eliminated on Route sixteen. Started that request on March of two thousand and twenty three. I have a some questions I have all I've already spoken to the first selectman and Sarah before this meeting. So if it sounds hazardous, I just don't want to reiterate all the information again. But so here are some of the questions I have to date. Is has anyone spoken directly with Joseph O'Vale, the supervisor at the Connecticut D O T? Who authored a traffic investigation report which denied the passing zone were both removable? Have anyone talked to him directly?
I can let me answer, let me answer that. I I'm not sure. They might have called me or something like that. I could have been something because I pulled up all those reports after our conversation to make sure that we're all on the same page. Uh, from my initial request back in two thousand and twenty three, um, and I just went through it. Then I went through the report that he gave stating that he saw no. Or or uh, uh, any type of modifications. Um, in saying that. I gonna pull me a couple. I'm not sure. He could have called me. I don't. I don't have any emails to that degree. The only thing is I can say is, um, you know, looking over it has some things changed since then. I could make the argument, yes. I mean, I have a lot of traffic from, um, you know, the Scots paper. I don't know what they call it now, um. The multi, you know, all those semis that come on down there. Um, I've, you know, reiterated this with our traffic authority. We just did a study about a month ago, well, maybe three weeks ago. And that was one of the major concerns right there. And it just happens, especially in the summertime, the canopy. You cannot, you know, you cannot see as you go up. So and I had this paperwork, uh, because Mark DiCaprio is on hit, you know, on the other side. You know, his other hat has been helping me. So, um, what I plan on doing is just resubmitting the letter, you know, with new information. Because, you know, I'm in full agreement that, you know, there's something that's going to be done. To answer your question. I'm I'm not taking the easy way out. I don't know. He could have called me up or one of his reps could have called me up and in the middle of something, it's just. Hey, you know, we sent you out the thing. Do you agree with it? And I, you know, it's just like, wait a second, you know, without having anything to know. I don't know.
I'm I I, you know. I don't know who called for me would do anything, but I really think than a direct call to him, you know, one on one. A lot, a lot of times because this image on the shore sees a whole host of things that come across his desk to the state of Connecticut. Versus this one little zero point seven miles of roadway, right?
Right.
So the next question I have is, um, has anyone asked to have the report corrected that he sent out? Stating that you were in concurrence with what he wanted to do.
That will be part of the conversation.
Okay, because I I think it needs to be corrected.
Yeah.
I I am going to submit this paperwork and along with it is a FOIA request. And what I want to go into that is, um, I'd like to know, and this is all written out, but in brief. I'd like to see what citations have been written for that section of the road from March twenty three to July eight twenty 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 five. Um, the reason I'll say the reason why I'm reflecting that is. First of all, I don't think anything's happening. I've seen one in that amount of time, one person, whatever. And I spoke to the state trooper and he said he was happy to be passing the road. Was it the resident state trooper? No way affiliated with Lebanon. I don't even know if he was out of K barracks. He just said he was trans transferring through the this this area. And, uh. So I think it it would be a lot of knowledge to understand how many tickets or citations were written to see how if the road is going to be moved on or. Then, um, and as you know, about the the radar mile per hour display. Sign setup. And it's what I understand is the town has one. It was issued one from the state. And when I talked, I'm not sure if I talked to you or Sarah or who, but I was told that since it was paper, they couldn't put one up. I talked to some people after that and they've never heard that before. Matter of fact, sixteen Route sixteen. On it's on the road in Colchester when they were building the Colchester Senior Center. It could actually chain to the this, the sign for thirty mile an hour.
Why?
It's Route sixteen. It's like if you put one there, like you have one in Lebanon on Route sixteen.
I thought it did cut. So we, yes, we will investigate. Uh, but that did come from our resident state trooper and we did accept some more recent signs and that was part of the contract. But I definitely want to investigate that further.
So the the FOIA request I have is actually to, if that is absolute, if that is, then I'd like to see. The policy, the regulation, the law, the provision that says we can't put this there.
Sure.
Um. The next thing is, um, it's my understanding that the first selectman is the local traffic authority. And I have said this a number of times, this, you know, to put it bluntly, why can't you have the hammer and telling the state? Remove that passing zone. You're the local authority. So again, under the FOIA request, I'd like to know what provisions out there. It says you can't ask for that to be done. And then lastly, um. What's the next steps from here, right? As as you know, our conversations, sure, go on for more than two and a half years.
Yeah.
What else could I do? What else could it, you know, who else could I go to to get this done? And how long, how much more time do we have to wait to get it done? I actually, um, after I spoke with you, I visited a number of my neighbors who are here today. The eleven. So this is not just me.
No, believe me.
All my, actually, other neighbors wanted to be here, but because of the time and ways and they couldn't. But I have not approached a neighbor on either side of sixteen in that section of road. That would wholeheartedly want to see the passes of by drink, completely removed. They don't see any reason for it. Actually, if everyone says if you don't bring going down that road, there's no way that you don't put them on the hour.
Right.
So why do you need a passing zone? But so I know it might be getting tired of, but I really think that this is a.
I'm in complete agreements with you. I mean, it's, you know, especially, you know, I drive that road almost every day. And believe me, it's I, there is no shoulder. There's no soft shoulder. There's, you know, you've got, you know, line of sight issues. And, uh, you know, most, I haven't spoken to most of the neighbors, but, you know. Majority are in agreement that, you know, it's it's, uh, somebody's going to get hurt.
Well, um, here's the hard copy. Yeah, you got right with so.
Very much.
And it's, um, it's the FOIA request and all the documentation that I have. The letters of governor, the letter, the report from D O T and also Representative DiCaprio's letter.
Yeah.
Through, uh, like Joseph O'Vale.
Thank you very much. All right.
All right, thanks.
And I'll be getting in contact with you. I'll be sending that stuff out and I'll keep you in the loop and see what we can do.
I appreciate it.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Other pub, yes, sir.
Yeah, Steve Blovens, Jennifer Blovens, who went to Lebanon Avenue. And we strongly want to reinforce what Scott just said. So we've we've lived at that location for forty six years. When we first moved in, the speed limit was forty, still forty. But I suspect that the cars that go by our house are closer to sixteen than they are to forty. And on the, since the refiguration of the passing lane on the stretch from off the hill. It's worse and and cars pass two at a time. Um, speed is, speed is something that is a great concern to us. So we really want to strongly stand behind what Scott said. I I'd love to see a sign out there that says video enforced speed limit. And I would suspect whoever put them, whether it's the state or the town, will bring in a lot of money. Number one, but more importantly, it will begin to slow, slow speeds down over time. So that's something that can be added to. The Scott's concern is video enforced on that stretch, um, is probably slowing on the traffic and the passing. So.
Thank you, Ray.
He's been right for a long time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? Well, thank you, Scott. I will be reaching out to you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
You did. Um, if there's no other public comment, I'm going to move on.
Nothing, anything on Zoom. So you're good.
Nobody on Zoom?
No one has their hand raised.
All right. Moving on to correspondence. Um, we had a quick thank you note. Uh, a couple of them, one from the art camp director. Um, Eagle Scout Tanner. Um, you have your June report for N E C O. And the June report from Chupkay. Uh, a letter from our town attorney to the First Congregational Church. And, um, three point six, a volunteer fire department receives a grant for twenty five hundred dollars for power tools, accessories. And hose adaptives. And on three point seven, a farmer's market survey results. Any questions or comments?
I just had a question on the. Volunteer Fire Department receiving the grant for two thousand and five hundred dollars. I read through it. I understand it's a fifty percent reimbursement of the cost. Of their project, um, with the maximum of grant award being the two thousand and five hundred dollars. And I was just wondering what the plans were to use that money. Um, I see that it's, you know, hoses was one of the things listed in things, and I know you have the new fire truck is coming that needs to be totally equipped. Um, I was just wondering.
Yeah, I own Atlantic Assistant Fire Department. Every year, the Connecticut D E E P, uh, and, uh, it looks for rural volunteer fire departments. With a population, a town population of less than ten thousand. And they get federal money and they supervise the administration of the grant. And every year we submit for this grant. Some years we get it. Lately, we've been getting it pretty often. And it's just a, you know, whatever we feel we need for, like, uh, you know, the items that you stated, you know, things wear out or. Um, stuff we need, the the hose and so forth. And, you know, all this is, a lot of this is for, uh, the new, you know, uh, some of the, uh. All this stuff here was, we were thinking of putting it down by the training facility, but now we've got some used hose for that. Um, probably go on the new truck.
And I think that was, uh, if there's an opportunity, if some of that can help offset some, you know, um, restocking the new truck that's coming on it. Hose is kind of a use for that.
Yeah, but see, it was delayed this past year because of the activities that went on last year.
Yeah.
I'm typically, we were finished by January of two thousand and twenty five. But because of all the activity last year they were busy with. Uh, or the money from the federal government didn't come soon enough. You know, it's way past time frame. So, um. Um, you know, a lot of this stuff is just, you know, a fair amount of it is, uh, you know, stuff that we want for forestry stuff that either pools have worn out. Or novels have worn out, meaning our good stuff that, you know, we had in this year, hopefully they'll have it again and what were you flying for again?
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you. I was just wondering, you know, being that, um, I believe it stated that we're supposed to get from, um, get it from tip to equip that. Um, right? Wasn't that, um, the Board of Finance had suggested that we take money for tip to equip that? And then my understanding is recently, of course, the cost of the estimate has gone up from what we originally had. So that's why my question, thank you.
This too, yeah.
Yeah.
Every year we apply for it and they're generous with it.
It has to go to forestry court.
It has to go to forestry or something.
Well, that's what this says, Alan.
Those funds can be used for trade.
Well, we have the list. I have a copy if you want to hear it, but.
Yes.
Typically, it is for for these.
Okay.
So that's that's right.
And we, I also put, um, Chief Shaw up as a co-host. So Jay, if you can, you're more than welcome to unmute and chime in if you would like to.
Yeah, the only thing I would echo is that most of the the D E P grant is used for D E P related type stuff, which is forestry type. Appliances, hose, things like that. There's actually a plan we had to submit for reimbursement with the hoses and all that. Um, certainly, if we can, and and it's practical, we can use some of that money to offset some of the costs. But for the most part, it's mostly for forestry stuff. After last year's pretty significant brush fire season, we lost a lot of our equipment. Um, or it was damaged during that season. So a lot of that cost offset that.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on?
The other comment, I appreciate the thank you letters. And it was nice to see the the, uh, results of these early at the farmer's market.
Yeah.
Pretty positive.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to our department report, uh, four point one. Who's giving our fire department report? Chief or assistant chief?
I'm sorry.
It's me. It's me.
Okay, go ahead, Jake.
Yeah, this is all because then I got to go back to work, but, uh, we did sixty six calls last month. Sixty eight percent of those were EMS, thirty two percent were fire. One of those was the structure fire in Colchester that we responded to mutual aid, as well as the animal rescue that you saw, uh, just last week. Obviously, that wasn't in July, but it's okay. We'll talk about it now. Um, we did rescue that little dog from Lake Williams, uh, during the day. Uh, combined effort with the folks that were there on the ground. Uh, that was a good response. And then we had the tree that came down that took out power to the entire town during the fair. I just wanted to reiterate on that one, the First Selectman Emergency Management Director, our ever source representative. The leadership with the Lebanon Fire Department, all of us worked together to get the power restored to the fair as quickly as possible. Uh, do want to echo, uh, what I said previously, that that was a great job by all. The fair this year, outside of that, was pretty much uneventful. I think we transported one party out of there. It wasn't too bad. We had thirty eight members that provided some level of service throughout the three days. Um, the Columbia, oh, we did a recruitment event in Columbia that we do yearly with a bunch of, uh, area departments. We've been continuously going to the farmer's market every Saturdays. Uh, yesterday, I'll bring it up anyways, even though it's August, but we did a training, a mock search and rescue training at a local residence here in town. Uh, along with Columbia, Colchester, South Wyndham and Franklin. Just wanted to thank Neil and Melissa Rich and Tanner Evans for their involvement in that. Um, and then lastly, uh, the American Legion Department of Connecticut at their annual meeting this year awarded the Lebanon Volunteer Fire Department. As their Fire Department of the Year, um, on the eastern side of the state, um, Thomaston on the western side. So that was a great honor. Uh, Chief Olenek and myself attended that event and accepted that on behalf of the Lebanon Volunteer Fire Department. That's all I got. Thank you.
Any questions for our chief?
Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Again, thank you to the whole department. Uh, Finance Department.
Hi, it's been really busy in the finance office. It's year end and, um. The audit has started, so given a lot of information to our auditors and setting up the new. Funds for the school project, D P W project. Um, we ended this school year twenty five. With approximately four hundred and ninety nine thousand surplus in our town operations budget. And approximately. Four hundred and ninety thousand in revenue. Revenue, I still have to make some general entries, so. That could give or take twenty thousand or so. Um. But yeah, it's, I don't have really much else to report, but then it's been really busy.
It has been. It was nice having the auditors here for the beginning of the week. So any.
What do you attest the four ninety nine to, uh, roughly?
Roughly, um, benefits. Uh, I think D P W came in sixty thousand or so in salaries under budget because they had some vacancies. Um. I'd have to look at my report. For the most part, I know salary, a benefit, not salaries, but benefits were way under hundred and fifty or something, I think.
And this doesn't include the board of ed? It's just the town operations budget?
No, it does include.
Oh, it does. Okay, okay. No, I wasn't sure.
No, and there are four ninety transfers. The board of that is included.
Okay.
Um. So if you look at your total budget for twenty four, twenty five, you'd have to pretty much add back in. Expenditures for the transfer to non-lapsing fund, which was a hundred and twenty seven thousand, four thirty three. And add back in one point seven million for, uh, the special town meeting that we had last October for. Surplus funds we use for, um, some capital projects and also the transfer. From the library fund for D P W. So they they have to be expensed through the town operations budget, but. Um, so, yeah, so it's a twenty nine million, thirty three thousand. Is, uh, overall expenditures versus the budget of twenty nine, five, thirty three.
Very good. Other questions? Comments? All right, moving on to the Department of Public Works. Um, I have a briefly report, uh, Dean is on a mission. So last month, uh, they continue to do the roadside moving town wider continually now. Uh, they peppered milled and paved the approximately seven thousand two hundred feet of Ocean Hill Road. Along with paved Kingsley from the town line to town line, uh, from Wyndham to Columbia. And peppered milled, uh, West Town Street, uh, right over here by the town hall on the southwestern side. Um, mowed the town green, picked up trash at the facilities. Replaced some street signs and completed the masonry wall repairs at the library. And are continuing tree removal and, you know, obviously it's a roadside. Any questions I can write down for Dean?
I think the green looks great. Thank them for the work there.
I would like to also, um, say the same thing. I think the green looks great.
And we also just, uh, we also just reiterated to our gardener to concentrate up by the Beaumont down on Northern End, you know, some weed whack in there. So, very good. Uh, Selectmen's Office.
In on your page fifteen, it outlines our, uh, town hall Facebook page. We had more posts this month than ever in the past, eighteen posts. Uh, we had over twenty six thousand views. Our top views, um, were special town meeting notice, just when we first like announced it. Um, hiring recreation coordinator and hiring gatekeeper. Whenever we do hiring, it always is a hit. Um, our YouTube has been, um, getting some action lately, which is exciting. But we have sixty three videos, twenty three subscribers, and in the last twenty eight days, we had fifty five views, which is a fifty three percent increase. So that was interesting to see. Um, and our top video viewed in June was the Board of Finance meeting. For rentals, we indicate who has been using our facilities and the rental fees collected. Uh, we had two FOIA requests in July and the pistol permit information what was issued and applications taken were also listed. Does that mean if you have any questions?
Um, I'd just like to request, um, that to put on future agenda that we reevaluate the rental fees at the community center. And at the fire safety complex, um, public side, um, as I think having some revenue coming in is better than no revenue coming in. So I think we need to relook at that. So that could be on the next agenda or even a special meeting if we have a special meeting before our September meeting.
We probably will have a special meeting at some point in time, but we can throw that on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
That would be good. Okay. Any other questions for the Selectmen's Office report? Moving on to five point oh, our consent agenda. Um, I'll entertain a motion to accept a consent agenda as presented.
So.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Ventions, eyes have it. Moving on to six unfinished business, six point one, D P W building. Uh, I see we have, uh. Uh, Jim Russo in the audience. Hey, Jim, thank you very much for coming. You want to do a quick little, uh, brief report on our D P W building?
Sure. Uh, as of the end of last month, uh, the entire set of, uh. Regarding for for boring to have been come. Feeded, uh, currently we have three big package and out to a bid. Uh, what is for the is the installation of the steel structure? Uh, number two is the concrete town. They should work in number three is the, uh, site, the development package, uh, for expecting bids the middle of this, uh, month. We review them and we'll come back. To the town for, uh, for your, for the award. Uh, currently, I'm anticipating the delivery of the steel structure sometime in the month of September. That's where we stay. If if old news, you know that we, that Dean and his crew has read about the. Existence structure, you know. So we're all, we are all set to, uh, to get started.
Great, great. And it will be opening up those bids sometimes, I think in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we have a bid opening next week in the two, the following week.
Very good. Any questions on our D P W project? Jim, thank you very much. Uh, six point two, our fire department substation. Um, Alan's going to pick a pick on you for a little bit. Have you had any other discussions with Phil?
I haven't, but Chief Shaw maybe has a way of answering that.
Okay. Uh, Chief, if, uh, I know you're at work, if, uh, is there any other core, uh, information on the substation project?
I know that, uh, Phil and I talked about, uh, potentially going into an executive session here at one of these meetings coming up for us to discuss it further. We did have a discussion with a potential property owner, um, and we had some internal discussions, uh, at the firehouse. Other than that, uh, nothing yet until we get together as a group and talk about it formally.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, the senior affordable housing project. I don't believe there's any other updated news on that. The fire safety complex, I can touch a little bit on that one. Uh, we could get in contact with Brian Hughes. And, uh, uh, he's working with the contractor to make sure that there, uh, are no leaks. The the ice dams have been installed and we, you know, looking to close out that project, uh, upon, you know, the last, um. Inspection of the roof. The I T advisory group, who's picking up?
The I T advisory group is wonderful and we are focused right now on updating our town website. Um, because the backend of our current website is going offline, so we have to make some decisions. Um, and they. Are wonderful. We're very thankful for them.
Great.
Uh, slam study is, uh, is winding down, obviously. And, you know, we're starting to go into the phase of having a building committee. So this will be phased out and we'll add, uh, the building committee in future meetings. Bocce ball courts in the hands right now of our, um, our, um, town engineer. But I did want to read a correspondence there for a selectman. Uh, the membership of the Friends of Lebanon Senior Center voted to authorize the expenditures of up to four thousand dollars for an engineered plan. For two bocce ball courts. Sincerely, Janet Wizlowski. So I'll set that in for the record. So any questions on those? All right, moving on to new business, seven point one. Uh, the next one is to discuss and act upon our, uh, code of conduct for public meetings. So this. Down in Lebanon, public meeting rules of conduct introduction. In the town of Lebanon, essential businesses conducted at a public meeting. At the town's elected and appointed boards, commissions, the committees, collectively called boards and public meetings. Public meetings cannot function effectively unless conducted in a professional and respectful manner. In addition, the community judges judges its government by the way its officials conduct themselves. The town has a fundamental right to expect its public officials to conduct themselves. The town has a fundamental right to expect its public officials to conduct themselves in a manner that will preserve. Public conf- confidence in and respect for the government that they represent. These rules of conduct apply to all participants at public meetings, including members of the public. The rules authorize and direct the chair or acting chair of a board to take actions to terminate the behavior. At public meetings that violates the rules, the rules. Act professionally, keep the this uh discussions to the subject matter before the board and away from personal comments. Be tolerant and respectful with each with respect to each other's positions and comments. Everyone has a right to voice their opinion. Profanity, threatening sexist, racist or harassing gestures, comments or jokes are prohibited. Harassment includes the disruption disrupting others, inappropriate physical contact or threats of such contact. Deliberate intimidation, offensive or belittling comments related to sex, disability, age. Physical appearance, ethnicity, ethnicity, nationality or religion. Disruptive behavior is prohibited. This includes interrupting or speaking when the chair has not called on the person. Use of language likely to incite violence, use of audio electronic devices. Signs, posters, banners or other devices or displays that may distract or obstruct other attendees. Authority to enforce, each board chair or acting board chair. As well as the first selectmen shall have the authority in their sole discretion to make determinations as uh. As to whether the rules have been violated, to issue warnings to anyone violating the rules. That they will be asked to leave the meeting if the violation continues or is repeated. And to require the individual to depart a public meeting after a warning and repeated violations and warning. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion that we enter into the record. Our rules for public meeting, rules of conduct.
So moved.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, be second. Any questions or comments? That's it.
Uh one clarification, uh shouldn't it be as well as the acting first selectmen if you have the acting board chair?
Yes.
Sorry, is that seem? And is this for uh boards and commissions or is this for uh town meetings?
Everything.
Um and.
So this applies to all board and commission meetings, that's what you're saying?
All boards, commission meetings and public meetings.
And from an enforceability standard, and I don't want to debate this all night, but. How does one um enforce such a policy?
Uh it it'll come usually through the board chair. Or at a case of a town meeting, the town, the moderator has specific uh. Responsibilities, so it falls onto the chair or the acting chair.
And how, what is the mechanism to inform everything you said said policy?
We adopt it tonight and we send it out to all the boards and commissions and their chairman.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Being all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extentions, ayes, haves. Um moving on to discuss and act upon the proposal for the Green Tree Replanting Committee. Page forty-two, and thank you folks for showing up, sorry to that gift.
Okay, Green Tree Replanting Committee, I am going to get you set up over here so that you have this. I'm going to share my screen with the people on Zoom.
Okay, who's going to start? And just to introduce everybody should.
This is, the committee here is consists of Dan Nichols.
Dan Moore.
Yes, Dan Moore, Joan Nichols.
Right.
Chairman Barrett.
Dennis Crum.
Very good, there.
Who had been um given the the uh guidance and um. Task of looking at the Lebanon green and doing an assessment of the. Property, and I wanted to um show our whole. And some of our uh processes and assessments and reviews. Um so our our resources and knowledge you can see are sitting to my right, both of them. They have a wide range of historical capability and and career capability in the in this field. Um and you can see my, you can see our first joint um that this committee was established in previous years. Um and the data shows that during that particular effort, um it was a twenty thousand dollar. Effort that was a grant from Hugh Trumbull Adams at that time. And um Joan's input, um the kidding me is tell you about sixty percent of the plantings did not survive. Um as you can see, um it over the past three years, as you can see, um. I think it's a low estimate that six trees have been removed by the greens uh on the greens by the wardner. I'll tell us if you can see that, um so our first effort, uh we did a a sidewalk and audit of the green. Uh performed in those previous ones in the spring, um and we inventoried, as you can see. In particular, um sites have used a particular map that was given to us by the town. And those are identified in survey. We have those, we have that data already saved on. Uh for historical knowledge as well as um what worked and what didn't work in those. On the green based on, as Dan pointed out, we have certain conditions that are very wet and very dry, so. Um the thoroughness of the of of the review, I thought was um. Important to how we propose planting for the future. So um with Jimmy identified, as you can see, uh. Six new planting areas, um installing approximately twenty plus trees as noted. Including the location on the south side of town hall, so to your left here. Uh closer to the greens, across the green store, one of the same sites. The uh next action that we had is you can see that the Sons of American Revolution. Uh donated a a Liberty Elm that identified a location for. Um as well as um to make this effort consolidated. Um the library, uh Friends of Library has um has a allocation of money. For planting a tree at Memorial, the former director of the library, and we took that upon ourselves to. Identify location and Dan Moore um made an identification of the proper planting of the type of tree there. To make this particular investment sustainable. And protecting the investment down the road, um our. Our required proposal has maintenance packages of the existing trees as well as including um. Maintenance for the trees that we proposed planting going forward. So we want to protect and sustain our investment going forward, so. Um our last slide says that. With the twenty plus trees that Dan and the committee identified. There was a a particular quotation we got from Pride's Corner. And we have a figure that we feel is represents all those plantings excluding. The um.
The library tree.
The library tree, which that is a six hundred dollar uh um allocation for that, so. The installation what Joan Rick acquired from a local landscaping company. For the installation of of those twenty plus trees. At a designated time sooner than later, um she also on the third bullet. The maintenance of those existing trees and plantings that are on the green right now, we, as Joan discovered, Dan. There's a lot of um bittersweet and poison ivy and other invasive. C- croppings around those trees that could threaten the survival of those trees, so we thought being proactive is to. Take care of that action immediately. As far as the new plantings go, um Joan made um an inquiry about a maintenance. Contract for three years because we'd like to establish those trees, but not today. And um we were given a quote that a thousand dollars a year. For three years and sustain those trees until they're healthy and sustainable on their own. So our total funding requirement, as you can see, is a little higher than it was in two thousand and six, Joan. And we feel that um we're putting an investment here and the maintenance. Um that could sustain the green and continue its um beautification as was noted earlier.
And if I could, Dan, you've been working as a liaison between this committee and the Historical Society too. Can any, any obstacles there or you, everybody on the same page?
None of that, I have a question. The S A R, the Sons of the American Revolution, who owned the war office, offered to donate. An a Liberty Elm tree, it also came with, we want to put a granite marker on it. As I understand the agreement, when the town took full title to the green, there can't be any. Bandstands, anything that's there now is there now, but there can't be anything new. My suggestion to them was we will plant the tree that they want to donate. In front of the war office, as it should be. And the monument, if they want to put one up, can go on their lawn, which acts as a as a. An attraction, I think. The question that I have is that. Joan and I, well, Joan and I approach things a little differently because we're border culturalists, but. But people are, there are, there are some pretty neat things on the green. Among which are elm trees and 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 trees that you don't normally recognize. And I know that the green is is a very popular place for people to be walking on. What we would like to see is some of the trees marked, but. And we mark them with with a with a with a marker without violating the agreement.
It used to be marked, didn't it? There used to be markers on it, didn't the scouts or something used to have markers on it?
It used to, like at the cemeteries, you know, they have those markers where they put a. Something like that, and then you put it in and they mark the type of tree. Uh I think the Gluck boy did a scout project that way, but. The I had a question about the green though, specific, can I ask?
Yeah, please, yeah, and I'll just then then any questions. Like for, you can be directed to Joan and Dan.
So my questions were, are the tree plantings that you've identified meet the Eastman documents that are on? Okay, so you are.
Everything is indigenous, there's nothing, you know, we're not bringing in.
I don't remember.
So they're all native, they're of the area, and that's what, yeah.
It's basically what we've done with the campus.
Okay.
If it's not indigenous, then don't get it.
So this couple of questions I had as I read this, so one of the problems is even though the green is wet. We have struggles watering plants or new plantings, right, so. Is that part of the reason some of our plantings have failed is because we haven't watered them properly?
Can I weigh in on that?
Absolutely.
So the reason that I mothballed and I I came from Franklin back to Lebanon. Is um I've been involved with the tree warden for twenty-five years in Lebanon, I did just about every tree planting out there. When we did the two thousand and six planting, there were a variety of reasons the trees failed. First of all, some of them, it's a very wet spot, as you all know. So some tree species just don't like having their feet wet all the time and they failed. Um I mentioned this to Kevin and this gets back to the maintenance. Um there was severe weed whacking, so a lot of the trees were girdled and they failed. There was over mulching, which I call the anthills, and as much as we appreciate volunteers willing to help mulch. When you make an anthill, you know, a foot and a half up the base of a tree, you might as well just kill the tree. So variety of reasons they failed, um the beach failed because we have beach leaf disease. So the three beach died because we have, so we had some infestations. That, so the point being is the trees didn't fail initially because of lack of water. They failed over a period of time either to diseases in, you know, in pathogens. Um mechanical damage, you know, or wrong, just basically wrong tree in the wrong spot. But that's what we learned, like if on the north end of the green where we planted the river birch, the two of the two below. And um and the sw- swamp, literally, it's a swamp white oak, that's the species. Those particular trees happen to like wet conditions and they're doing beautifully. That's why the green has so much red maple, it's it's wet. Um so we took all of that into consideration when we looked at the plantings this go around. To kind of learn not what we what we didn't get right in two thousand and six. Is why we really looked at the site conditions and 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 that's another reason for this. We're very adamant about the maintenance, so we don't make another investment. I think the last budget, what did I say in the email was around, we spent of the twenty thousand that you Trumbull Adams. Donated in two thousand and six, I think we spent. Almost thirteen thousand dollars, of which we lost sixty percent of the trees, so we just don't want to do that again. And American Landscaping, which did a phenomenal job when they, that's the other thing, it wasn't for for planting. American Landscaping did a fantastic job in two thousand and six, and they're the one that gave us the quote both for the planting and the maintenance. Um and if we happen to get into a drought, I think we're looking at September. Planting, fall planting and I'll wait, let Dan weigh in on this. I have found in any tree planting, you're, we have more success with a fall planting than a spring planting. And the other thing is, um we can at request of irrigation bags if we go into a dry fall. You know, we can, like, we had that really dry fall last year, so we can certainly go to American Landscaping and say, can you? Put irrigation bags around here. So and there would be mulch around the new plantings to keep that moisture in the root system for the first three years or so. But after that, we don't need to mulch the green.
So what additional question, do you have a map or layout of what's presently there? And then where are you proposing uh they go? Because I don't see it in the package here.
Yeah, that data is um in our minutes. Uh we have minutes that we did lay out the locations um in proximity to addresses. Um of houses and and such.
So the reason I had asked that question was, so if I have a, if I don't have a tree in front of my house, I live on the green. Are you gonna put a tree in front of my house on the green proper and then when it comes in the fall bloom, I won't have that view anymore?
Not necessarily.
No.
Okay.
The green looks like a rip, like when everybody says, let's go plant trees on the green, it's looks like you've got a lot of room. When you really look at. When you really look at where you can plant the trees, you're very limited. We've got wet, we've got drainage dishes, ditches, we've got the farm farming operations. On the Route eighty seven side, a good part of that is within the DOT right away. So we're not going to plant trees within the DOT right away. We're not going to put them underneath the power lines. So to answer your question, we identified, I think, six, five or six. Areas that are suitable for planting and also we don't want to plant them in competition with other trees. So I don't, it's not necessarily whether, other than in front of the Catholic Church where we decided we wanted to replace the dogwoods that failed. Um, the last time, well, one is, one died and the other one is in the process of failing. Um, it wasn't necessarily in relation to any one house or structure other than in front of the Catholic Church, the library. And the War Office. Other than that, it's just where do we have room and where is it appropriate?
So we started out, you know, the uh Eastman documents. Those were great. I mean, they're, you know, the big pick, you know, three by whatever. And each tree was identified. And uh they were all, you know, all out there, you know, making sure and use that as a guide to. Where where uh your your replantings are going to go and then we just will keep up. An inventory.
Underneath the the wiring, so we're going to do lower bush type.
Yeah, we're going to do when we, when we had gotten when Joyce was first selected, we had gotten it, Ever Source gave us, the town got a grant from Ever Source. And we planted some really low trees underneath the power lines in front of the middle school. Um, because you don't want to put some of them tall trees on power lines, so we're not going to do that again either.
Okay, okay.
So this avoid the agriculture activity?
Absolutely. Nothing's going anywhere near the Hayesville's. Nothing.
Yeah, and it's posted, Sarah was so kind to post it up on the screen, like, you know.
This is helpful, but I I prefer to see a map personally, just so I can have a better understanding of where stuff's going.
Yeah.
Even offline.
Yeah, we can, we, we have it.
Sure.
We have it.
Yeah, we can coordinate on that one. You have a draft?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Carol.
Um, I just have a comment and a question. So. Have you looked into any grants or anything to cover this, any of these costs now? Like, would Hugh Trumbull Adams have? A grant availability? Wasn't there a period of time that?
We have funds, five thousand two hundred and seventy seven dollars, I believe, left for tree replanting on the green.
Okay.
Five thousand two twenty seven, yep, and it's available in the Adams Memorial Fund now, that's the balance. Um, but I think annually you can apply.
Right, that's what I thought.
Um, because I know the library applies for a grant, other um. Historical Society does, so I wouldn't see why.
I don't think the town can apply.
No.
I think you have to go through the museum to apply.
Okay.
The town can't be the recipient of the Trumbull Adams money.
Okay, that that was just.
That's where you come in again, Dan.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, the town, the town cannot receive some funds directly. But perhaps a collaboration between uh First Selectmen's Office and LHS can coordinate a request, it's usually in the fall, so you should be getting a letter soon. For the request. My understanding is they're not as generous as they have been in the past, but there is money available.
Yeah.
Um, but you gotta give it a whirl.
So that was one question and um another grant, like I had just looked up, there was was a Deep Trees for Communities Grant Program. But the deadline for that is August thirty first. Um, and there has been like some informational meetings and stuff already um that. I don't, I don't know, I was just wondering for that. Um. And the other question or the other comment I had was I recently have been up at the University of Vermont in Burlington. And walking my granddaughter on the campus there and um they have, you know, if you, if you've been up there, it's just gorgeous, all the trees on the campus there. And I noticed that they didn't use mulch, but they do have these circles like around it to keep. Lawnmowers and weed whacking and everything away from there. Um, and I actually took a lot of pictures, right, Kevin? I came home and showed Kevin, I said, look at this, this is what. Um, so I don't know, is that something that you would recommend in order to keep, it would kind of keep a little bit less weeds, right? Bittersweet and stuff from getting in there.
It looks like the 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 sod is cut around it.
I have pictures and stuff.
You know, like.
Okay, so that was just, okay, I have lots of pictures of it, so I I can share with you.
Yeah, don't anybody.
Okay, so I.
There are a few trees up there that are really spectacular.
Yeah, yeah.
We want, we want to, we want ones that are there now, never mind what we're in.
Okay, well, if you let me know, like, where you want me to share them to or whatever the pictures, um, I can share them to Dennis, if that's.
Yeah, I can forward.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I can either.
Okay.
And you're hoping to do this this fall?
Yes, and and so my question to the to the order selectmen is um. We weren't given a scope of of where funding would come from. I thought it would.
That's what I'm trying.
We're trying to figure that out.
Yeah, so we got, we got approximately five thousand dollars.
Five thousand two hundred.
There's five thousand, there's also more funds in the Adams Memorial Trust for miscellaneous. Projects that you're u- utilizing it for the crosswalk.
Right.
Um, you could use some more.
Handle some money from there too.
Yeah.
So do you think between the funds and all that stuff, we get some coverage here?
Maybe between this and tip. Or now, you know.
Lot of projects in town.
You, this isn't even on tips radar. I don't think it's on tips radar.
No.
Anyway, I think Robin had something he wanted to say.
Go ahead, Rob.
But so to say, I don't think it's the committee's responsibility to figure out where the money is coming from.
No, 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 no.
I think we should be.
No, they were charged with where the trees go and what trees we need.
Exactly.
Yeah, they did a great, great job and they're not done yet.
Except Dan, we want to check with the museum about if there can be a grant. To Trumbull Adams, since we can't do that. No, you don't think.
Let's, how do we, all right, because how do we expedite this for September? Can we get some?
Well, how much would you need right off the bat, I guess?
We need the two thousand.
Forty two hundred for the plantings, right, and the thirteen to install.
Yeah.
We would need the money, in my opinion, I think we need the money to purchase the trees, prizes, I mean, they're going to win.
And how, and and how much is that off?
The forty two hundred.
Forty two hundred. Okay, whatever we, the library tree was, which I think was.
Just tell us forty two hundred.
We have six hundred between the tree.
Okay.
And then, and then we'd have, was the whole bill from American to the planting thirteen or did that include the maintenance? American gave us a quote to plant the trees and then they also gave us a breakdown on maintenance, so.
There were three quadrants.
Three quotes.
The installation of the, of the new trees, maintenance of the existing trees, and then the maintenance plan.
So roughly, what do you need, what do you think we need right now to expedite this for September?
Well, the maintenance and the two main items conveniently come up to five thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
Which could be a grant application possibly.
Yeah.
So we need to find the seventeenth.
Well, you could take it out of the Adams Memorial Fund.
You could, it's that much. Mm-hmm, yeah.
For the, for the whole thing?
Yeah.
No, not the maintenance.
No, the planting and the installation.
The world.
I think it's, it comes, I think budgetarily, it needs to be attributed to buildings and grounds.
Yep.
For three thousand annually or a thousand annually, because it is buildings and grounds. And I think we take the twenty out of the Trumbull Adams money you have.
Mm-hmm.
And that takes care of the acquisition, but I think we need to budget. We have to tell them.
Put that in form of.
Maintenance out of.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and that is for twenty thousand dollars for out of the.
Trumbull Adams.
Memorial.
Memorial Trust.
Fund.
Fund.
And the maintenance from the town operations.
Town, buildings and grounds.
I think.
Any other questions or comments? With that, I'll call a question all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Size have it? Thank you very much, all of you, really.
Phil would love to see a map, but thank you.
Yeah, we're going to get the map and get that done, and you know what? We'll take one of those maps that we originally started with. And we'll put the trees in, you know, the the on your list and we'll just switch it on or into that.
They'll show the five locations.
Thank you so much, folks.
Thank you.
Oh.
All right, we have to waive the competitive fit or uh requirement, right?
Well, because of the plantings.
So can, all right, let's backtrack a little bit, can we?
Oh, it's fifteen now?
It was fifteen, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it increased to fifteen in the last policy.
That's a.
Keep this. I need, off and up.
No, I was just. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, folks. Moving on to um seven point three. Discuss and act upon a proposed plan for the North Lebanon Cemetery on the Cemetery Commission. Jim, thanks for coming in.
There.
Uh, did you want to talk on this a little bit or?
You know as much as me, I all feel well, I'll answer questions.
Okay, very good. So here is the original document. Yeah, we had, this was laid out, this is, you know, what the town voted for, I'm sorry to make assumptions. But uh, this is North Lebanon Cemetery. Thank you, Ben. So what the proposal here, and this has gone through um, gone through uh our town. Uh, engineer, is the second um road. It's just um emphasizing that a little bit more and coming through, we do lose. Um, a couple of uh plots. But this helps facilitate going in, you know, like a one-way circle, especially when we start getting. Uh, funerals with a a lot of people. And one of the concerns uh from our Sexton and the Cemetery Commission. Was the safety issue of going up, turning around, so this here brings out another, another way of uh. Uh, entrance and uh egress and exiting the, so it's a deep, a slight deviation, just goes through. So if we could amend this to incorporate that. And then I can work with the dean and have that, you know, that part surveyed and get the. Get the uh project that the Cemetery Commission.
We didn't incorporate any money for this.
Nothing, uh, no, I think there was something that went through, we uh, over the last couple of years, they.
Yeah, it went, it went through capital.
Yeah, and in capital, I think in the budget, no, but in the budget time, I think I have that written down as a possible.
Yeah.
Surplus, right, surplus was what they said during budget.
So part of that, Betsy, um, was if we had gone to like a a um original proposal.
Right.
We'd have to tar it and all that stuff. This, we keep it, you know, gravy, uh gravel, gravel and keep the expense down.
We don't know the process, right?
No, we don't. We have to figure that out. All this is just amending the original plan.
I move to amend the original plans with the proposed uh proposal here.
Okay, do I have to, motions been made and seconded? Any other questions or comments? Be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now what we'll do is we'll figure out, we'll get it surveyed and start getting that, you know, in the planning schedule for with the DPW. Jim, any questions for us? I hope you feel better.
No, I have none.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Um.
Seven point one.
Seven point four, discuss and act upon hiring Andrew Phillips as the highway maintainer, your page forty seven and fifty one.
I'm.
Move to hire.
I move to hire Andrew Phillips as a highway maintainer.
Starting at twenty six oh nine per.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Motion's a seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, seven points. Seven point five, discuss and act upon hiring Mark Grello as a senior van driver. Seven, motion's been made and sec, do I have to second it? Uh, motion's been made and seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to seven point six, six, discuss and act upon hiring David Lopez. As the rec coordinator at a starting rate of twenty. Dollars fifty seven cents per hour for nineteen hours only.
So moved, seconds.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other questions, comments? Be none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Um, seven point seven, discuss and act upon allocating five thousand dollars from the opioid settlement funds for the senior. Center, monthly workshops on medicine, safety, substance misuse, uh, mental health treatment on your page sixty four. Entertaining a motion, for motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other questions, comments? Me and none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Um, seven point eight, discuss and act upon purchasing, purchasing AED devices and supplies. For the Lebanon transfer station from the opioid settlement funds on your page.
So there is no, this is in your extra packet?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that has, let's see, the top item says Lifeline High Capacity AED Package. Uh, that is valued at the total, everything on here, one thousand seven hundred and seventy seven dollars and sixty cents. So moved.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made for seconded, any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Yeah.
Opposed? Eyes have.
Thank you, Betsy.
Uh, we have added to the agenda, yeah.
We've done that.
Just um.
Understood.
Yeah, moving on to seven point nine.
Okay.
Discuss and act upon allocating eleven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for breath to the Lebanon following. Your fire department from the opioid settlement on your page sixty five.
Jay is no longer on Zoom, is that you? And?
Um, right.
Make motion.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
So.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Be you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Eyes have it. Number seven point ten, discuss and act upon calling a special town meeting to allocate funds from the open space account for the Girl Scout Camp, field property. Form the building committee. And fire department property tax of payment.
So in your, the, the one that's in your pocket is out of date, so I have provided you one, I can get right over. Um, the main differences is that we have divided the open space. Um, allocations to two separate categories and was a little bit more specific about who we're working with. Avalonia, Public Trust, Joshua's Trust, um, and then. Number five, I changed the wording a little bit based on talking to Catherine Marion, so this is still considered a draft. Um, because we are still working to get the ordinance from Catherine Marion regarding uh number five. So this is not a legal notice that you will be signing today, but I still. We would still like you to move forward with warning it, but it will not, we are not signing a legal notice today. Does that make sense?
Twenty eight.
Yes.
Okay, because we're looking for more information for number five.
We just.
Our details.
And we need the information to give to the town clerk before legally we can put anything out, so this is just procedural.
Yeah. So moved.
Um.
Actually, are we actually warning it though? I mean, we're not really, so what is the process?
It's, so it's really just defining the date. And then if you warn it, then I, because this is what would go up, right? And then the next step would be, there'd be information in the town clerk's office, and we just don't have all of the information. So you could warn it, but you're not legally allowed to put it out as a legal notice, so until the fifteenth.
Got it. Do you think the best approach here is to agree that we're going to have a town meeting on August twenty eighth at seven o'clock?
That is, we can do that.
And make the list later.
Perhaps to discuss these items, or this list will be made later, maybe we make this list later.
When would you like to regroup in order to uh warn it?
Well, we're going to have to have a special.
We need a special selectmen's meeting, we'll do item five.
Okay, so that, then we are not going to make the twenty eighth date.
Well, well.
Um, just because of vacation, so I will not be here, Kevin will not be here. Um, so.
So we can't make the date.
I don't, we're okay, we're okay.
I think, I think, I think we can, as long, we're, we're talking with Catherine. Uh, we had to have things in by the eighteenth.
Well, the the eighteenth, it must be in the paper, if we want to go with the twenty eighth.
So let's go with the twenty eighth, let's work. So let's go with the twenty-eighth, let's work a little bit backwards, let's go with the twenty-eighth, if we have to have. Um. Uh, a, a, a special meeting just with us. Uh.
So Kevin, if I can ask, you guys are off the thirteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth, right?
No, all next week.
All next.
But Kevin can be here, and we, we have Kathy as well.
Okay, so maybe we do a special selectmen's on the twelfth. And we can finalize this, and that would give enough time.
And that's, I.
Right, I've, she's not. Patient, tell me.
Exactly, so that's the only concern.
Did show, we did show a lot of concern for that yesterday, when I called her, I says that's one of those.
Full class.
Pull that one off?
Hmm.
Okay. Do you wanna still have a special with us and then just clarify everything?
Whatever works for the office.
All right, why don't we do a special meeting for the twelfth?
I don't think you wanna rush to try to get five resolved, if we're, nobody has seen a sample of that yet.
Right.
And, and I think waiting a few weeks is okay, because you're gonna have a second town meeting.
Town meeting.
And perhaps the third, we don't know.
Yeah, yes. But should we say that we are going to move to the twenty-eighth with these items listed then, if we're taking five off?
Yeah, you can do that.
You wanna do that?
Yeah, and then have that already done.
So why don't we do this?
The warning can be. At least organized, right?
Right.
Okay, yeah, so I move for that, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna ask, um, on the school building committee, and. All, I think all of the correspondents have said the potential. Renovations of three, the three schools, do we need, do you need to put, because there's no.
There's no fun thing.
There's no referendum, so it's still, it could be voted down, it's still potential. Um, I don't know, but I just remember in.
That that word was used.
Well, because there's questions even, you know, is it a building committee? Because is it a res- res- renovations committee? In the past, we've just established a, a building committee, they bring everything before the town anyway.
Yeah, no, I was just. The wording of it, yeah.
I got you. From historical knowledge, that's the DPW, it's the last building committee, or the library, library, you know. Do we, do you know if we use the word potential, or like?
No, we actually, uh, Jim was part of that, we put renovation and addition.
The, the, the additions.
Right, so we did, yeah.
But the committee itself was called the.
Library, library building committee.
Even though there were no funds voted for yet, for.
There had to be funds, because you have to source the committee, right, the committee needs working capital, it doesn't mean the project's approved, they still have to bring a project.
Right, right. But they have the two hundred thousand.
We're funding a committee to be organized, so a committee has to be organized.
Okay.
Right.
And, and you're gonna give them, or town's gonna give them a couple hundred, right, isn't that? So that's their money, the minute, the money, and so that's, that's the source.
Okay.
They're, I'm gonna assume their, um, directive or purpose was to, I'm, I'm, we have to create that.
Hmm.
And that document has to come through, I think, bond council. And Catherine, or the attorney, shipment and good when you retained on the attorney, didn't you?
We sure did.
Yes, yeah.
So I would get worrying as to what you're gonna have at the town meeting. For the school building committee, um, from him or her. Because they'll have the proper.
Term of.
Charge for that committee, if you don't give them the proper charge, then it, that boxes them into quite a bit of what they cannot do, so we wanna have them, they need latitude. Right, as to what they're gonna do.
Okay, so what we're gonna do then is everything here will remove five for now. And set that up in.
Are we using the word potential?
I don't know.
I don't think we need that.
No.
Now, you don't, you don't need it since we already have the money, two hundred thousand, that's a lot for the committee to start.
I think we just go with past practice, the way we've.
Okay.
Warned it from before, you know, every time.
So moved with, um, the removal of number five from the list that we have right now.
Very good, that good with you, Robin?
Fine.
Okay, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, folks, all right, let's move on to. Um. Discuss and act upon, um, eyes on Lebanon policies.
So this is basically a piece of paper that Catherine Marion wrote as a resolution that, like, the board would sign to. Finalize all of the work that's been put in over the past months. Um, again, we plan to review it in October, so this is really only.
For now.
For now, for two months, um, but it. It, it will then be certified.
So what do you, are we looking to, to?
So.
Are we looking to adopt this policy for right now and then redo it and knock over?
Basically, um, yes, and then in there, so I put in our political and then our regular advertisements, and then after that is that last page from Catherine Marion. That has the resolution. What page?
Around seventy-two, gotcha.
So then on page seventy-three, that's basically the resolution that.
Sorry, it's not.
Um. Okay, um, so that, page seventy-three, that's basically the signature page that Catherine Marion put forth to really certify what it is. Um. And we know in the policies that we will be revisiting them in October or November.
Right. And just note that. The September, um, the August deadlines, the eighteenth, due to vacation, due to Sarah going beyond vacation, you know how we had talked about the tenth? Before, but, no, we had said the tenth, but.
Right now, we're just getting this.
No, that's good.
What is, what is it?
Oh, yeah, uh, it's, it's up to you. I think it would behoove us, but. Um, we are short on time, so.
Yeah, I'm just looking, so all we're doing is adopting this right now and then re.
Re-looking at.
Re-looking at it in October.
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this.
I just wondered if you ought to have two year.
What?
The year.
You talked about August, we talked about September, we talked about.
August of twenty twenty-five, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, he, he's looking at seventy-two, when our submissions do, so August eighteenth. Twenty twenty-five.
It does say at the top, the strict does under establish for the remainder of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, do you see this, the?
Sentence.
Sentence before.
I can put twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
I think that, I think that fits though, if it says for the remainder of twenty twenty-five, and then it has.
It's got it here somewhere.
The colon, right under where it says when our submissions do, that first line, Robin. The following strict.
Seventy-two.
Yeah.
I feel like we have different patterns.
Oh, this is last month.
No, yours is just in, okay.
Here.
Yeah, there you go.
I got you.
The following strict deadlines are established for the remainder of twenty twenty-five, and then we go into listing the dates.
Good. Chair, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the, um, public, uh, publication and advertising pol- uh, policies. Motion's been made. Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed, ayes have it.
So we'll be signing this today.
Get you to sign it before the end of the month.
Okay, great.
I don't have a fresh copy, if you decide right now.
Seven point twelve. Uh, review and act upon the creation of a leave and salary compensation policy for the Lebanon's law enforcement, page seventy-four and seventy-eight, and I believe this is the last part of the. Um, our law, law enforcement policies that we.
Our police accreditation, yes.
And this is what Betsy and I met on, on.
And that it says reviewed by Catherine and Catherine.
So this, uh, this, is this the last one?
Yes, for the, for the law enforcement.
So the chair will entertain a motion to adopt. To adopt the last, the, this policy on the.
The leave policy?
And compensation for Lebanon's law enforcement.
So moved.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? I'll second it, any other questions or comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Seven point one three, discuss and act upon purchasing turnout gear for Fire Marshal Deputy Niesel for five thousand thirty dollars. From tip on your page twenty-nine, this has been on tip.
Yes.
So the chair will entertain a motion to appropriate those funds.
So moved.
Motion's been made, second, motion's been made and seconded, any questions, comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, now we do have a couple of additions to new business, I believe.
So we have.
Wanted to add a, I'm sorry.
Nope.
You wanted to add a lifeguard.
Okay.
Hiring of a lifeguard, um, Elizabeth Calamari.
Okay, um, to help expedite, Elizabeth came in, fill out an application, we do have some shortages, and this is for the remainder of the, uh. The, the swim calendar this year, um, so, uh, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to hire.
To add to the agenda.
To add to the agenda, thank you very much.
So moved.
Motion's been made, do I have a second? Motion's been made, seconded, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it, now, can we ask, how much?
Seven point fourteen, yeah.
Seven point one four, and her name.
Elizabeth Calamari.
Elizabeth Calam- Calamari for how much?
True. Sixteen eighty-one.
Sixteen eighty-one, uh, for the life, for, as a lifeguard.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any other questions or comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, ayes have it. What else do we have?
We have two quote, um. Wrong, that we put together, this is, uh, regarding the unfunded mandate from the state that was brought to our attention for the. Quick plot, am I saying that correctly?
Yeah, so there's a unfunded mandate that got, um, passed, called Stop the Bleed, um. Which you'll be reading about soon, if you haven't already, and speaking with Haley and Patrick McCormick. Um, they felt comfortable with funding could come from the opioid settlement account, so that's, I'd like to add it to the agenda so I can appropriate. Hostile support appropriating money.
So moved to add to agenda.
So I have a motion to add to the agenda, the, um.
Stop the bleeding.
And there's three different pages here on this?
Truly two, in this case, one for two eleven twenty-eight, one for eleven fifty-one twenty.
Okay, got it.
And it'd be added to the other.
Yeah.
Under one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the initiative requires public access, town public access, uh, AEDs, we also have in the same region, stop the block, stop the bleeding material. I took delivery last week of buying Stop the Bleed stuff for the one at Public Works. Due to the work, uh, workforce needs, and I, the one you just approved for the AED at the transfer station will also have the same kit. But all the lives, the library DPW, um. I, I, DPW's not official kit, it's just attorney kit, but I'm gonna give them official kit, so library DPW, senior center, fire safety complex, public side, the community center, the town hall. Would get supplemental kits, so I need, uh, that quote's actually a little off, so I had the wrong date, um.
So we're gonna add that as seven point one five.
Sure, but I still need a second to bring it onto the agenda.
A second.
Here's the total.
Thank you, then we need a motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
But.
Aye.
Just to put it on.
Aye, gotcha.
Okay, with Betsy's discussion, how much?
So I need fifteen hundred dollars, and it's gonna include the Stop the Bleed materials. And the training materials, and we have four instructors at the firehouse that will instruct. The community how to, the employees of the town how to use these kits, and this is an initiative we're gonna take on and help you out. Um.
Do you have a timeframe when that training will start, sometime in the?
Fall, yeah, fall, so I need fifteen hundred dollars.
All right, and that's out of the.
Opioid money, yeah.
So I'll entertain a motion to take that out of the opioid, so motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions, comments, thank you, Betsy. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, ayes have it, is there any other further business, uh, new business?
No, no.
Oh, um.
And I. That one is eighty thirty-seven, oh, that one.
Okay, so, is this in your packet or is this in the supplement?
That, this is in the supplemental packet, this was provided by the fire department.
Yeah.
Um, the top of your page, it says Bulldog.
I'm moved to put Bulldog, uh, Bulldog Fire Apparatus on the agenda, right? That's on the agenda first.
One six. Motion's been made, do I have a second? Second, motion's been made, seconded to add to the agenda, seven point one six, uh, the invoice. For Bulldog Fire Apparatus for, I believe this is truck. Two oh six, Alan, I believe.
This is.
ET two oh six, all right, so, any other questions, call a question, could put it on the agenda, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions, ayes have it, so this, um, it looks like you got some lead spring issues, uh, some shock issues, and. We're looking at a total. Uh, there's some, uh, valve repair. And then to finalize the frame and repaint in rust preventative for approximately thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars, right?
I think there's an additional three thousand five hundred twenty-five to that, right?
No, I think, I don't think.
There's two different pages.
There are two different pages, one, the subtotal at the bottom, uh. Three thousand five hundred twenty-five.
Right.
And then the other one is.
It says total.
Thirteen, yeah.
So, I don't see that in here, that's third, is it?
Well, the labor is.
Well, wouldn't the subtotal be brought forward onto the?
That's what I'm looking to see where it is, though, do you see it, brought forward?
Well, they might just.
Did they just bring it forward? Because another subtotal is three thousand eight hundred fifty. And another subtotal is one thousand four hundred forty.
Yes, it's.
And then. Yeah, see, there's all these subtotals that I think, I guess, must add up, right, so you have one subtotal of four thousand five hundred ten. And another subtotal for the three thousand five hundred twenty-five. And then another subtotal for the one thousand four hundred forty, and then. Subtotal of thirty-eight fifty.
They bet ones.
That adds up.
They, that adds up, and then they added the miscellaneous and.
Labor for the thirteen.
Cause if we.
Total's thirteen, three twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, all right, no, I just wanted to make sure, because they were together and I weren't.
Yeah.
Sure, okay.
Well, it looks like Jason on three might be online.
I.
Uh, it's not Jake, oh no, it says Jake.
He's working.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
Hold on, Jay, I'm putting you as a co-host. You have the ability to, I mean, if you'd like.
All right, sorry about that.
Yeah.
No, thanks, Jay.
I didn't hear, so, yeah.
So we're just going over the, uh, invoice.
Bulldog Fire Apparatus.
So the total is about thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars, correct?
That is correct, yep.
So, um.
That's not, we're not sure.
Have to put on tip. No, it's not a tip expense, so where else?
The Borifania has to let them, will go spend their budget and appropriate the money, probably out of contingency. It's not a tip expense. Good thing Mike is here, but.
Haven't been on the tip list, like, we just okayed the turnout gear that has been on the tip list for a long time. Right, but this is, this has not been on the tip list.
The emergency repair.
Right, it's a. So.
So Alan and Jay should speak about the need for the repair.
Yeah, so I, I can speak to that, so what happened is, we went, it went in for normal service the other day for air conditioning. Air conditioning service through our normal budget and preventative maintenance. While I was there, it was observed to have serious issues with the rear leaf springs on the vehicle, so much so that they had to torch them off the truck. Which, uh, leaves the truck inoperable in its current state. Um, they need to replace the rear ones and the front ones, because the front ones are also in, in danger of being an issue uh, as well, so it wouldn't be practical just to replace one, you have to replace all four at the same time, and that's a recommendation of the, of the manufacturer, so currently, that's the only engine, I mean, we have the other engine that's being replaced, but that's over thirty years old, it's a two seater, this is our frontline engine uh, that responds to all emergencies, with the exception of our EMS calls. Um, so it is very important, uh, and we're also trying to get life out of that truck, it's not due to be replaced for another five years at minimum, uh, so kinda gotta make it work.
So from, from this board's point of view, we are going to say yes, that it needs to be repaired, and then we just gotta forward that to the next board of finance, and I'll get that.
So is that like a recommendation from the board of slotsman to the board of finance?
Yeah.
In that kind of motion, okay.
So, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion that, uh, we were, you know, agreed to get this fixed for the thirteen thousand and uh, move it to.
Cause there is some timeliness on this, the truck is presently out of service. Your board's not meeting in August.
It's not.
And this truck needs to come back online, uh, ASAP.
So.
Somebody has to give them permission.
Permission to, to spend it and go.
So Mike, can I come to you in September with a, with a hat in hand and ask for forgiveness and try to figure out where we're gonna pay for this from?
How much money?
Thirteen thousand three hundred twenty five dollars.
Then we can definitely figure something out. Can you expedite it without us taking action, and do I need to call a special meeting?
No, I think we can expedite it, I just, you know, it just, the, the, the minutes will reflect that I'm coming to you.
It's an emergency vehicle, so we need to have that.
We, we also utilize Bulldog for our equipment, and I don't, I can find out tomorrow, you know, can they sit on it for a while, um, they did order the parts, so it's gonna get repaired, but as far as payment goes, can they, can they wait for a little bit of time?
Well, I think, you know, it's an emergency vehicle, I think, you know, we're, we're good, faith effort, we're working collaboratively together, so we'll figure out something, but you know, try to get the, my opinion, try to get the truck fixed and online, you know, sooner than later.
I'll make the motion to expedite this thirteen thousand five hundred, whatever it is.
Thirteen thousand, um, three hundred twenty five dollars.
Alright, so I have a motion, I have a second.
Yeah.
Motion's been made, seconded, any other questions or comments? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And with that, Haley, can you get something to officially to the board of finance?
Mm-hmm.
With that, with recommendation from our board? Okay?
Is okay, please?
Yeah, please.
So I just wanna be clear in process for you folks. So you're okay to take action, we will act on it as the board of finance in September.
Yes.
So you'll authorize the fund and will be able to get this done.
Correct.
As an emergency, and.
Right. And like, like, like I, you know, like with a septic or something like that, I come to you, I say, hey, this is, right, is what we have.
The other thing we've done in a long time ago is authorize them to over expend their budget just from a procedural standpoint on your part, and then somehow in the next sixty days, you guys just figure out appropriate the money to them and pay them bill. So who's gonna pay the bill to Bulldog?
It's not.
Yeah.
And then transfers.
And then we'll break out the funding.
Thing later.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
So should we authorize the town to pay the bill? Or are you authorizing the fire department to pay the bill? Not to be complex here, but who's gonna pay the bill, cuz.
The town's gonna pay.
The town's gonna pay the bill.
So did we make that as part of the motion?
Yep, we can.
Yes.
Men.
We can, I amend, or Robin amends the cut. Motion.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Alright.
You're not too worried.
As long as we get that information to the, to the board of finance. Is there any other new business to come before us?
You also.
Last two minutes, any other new business, alright, moving on to the minutes, uh, eight point one, discussing the act. Um, I need a motion to accept the news.
So moved.
Thank you, uh, for July first. Motion's been made and seconded, any questions, comments, or corrections? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, eyes have it, moving on to eight point two. Uh, I need a motion to accept the subcommittee meeting for policies and procedures on your page eighty six.
Yeah, so moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second it.